Okay, we're gonna follow up from last year's retreat. Some of this material that Nika has may look a little familiar. We're gonna go through with respect to the development of the specific use permitting process that you wanted to see. As I mentioned on Thursday, a lot of the effort associated with this has been occurring behind the scenes between legal and planning economic development and digging into the ordinance and setting it up where the amendments are as clean as possible and ready to go to the P and Z. And we're at that point now. You can wave, wave the ordinance, Nika.
Nika, now for the first one, I may only two copies.
Does that mean we don't have to bow out anymore?
I'm sorry.
She's waving the order?
That's, that's a new process.
Just wave.
I think she wants you to see how many she's...
Yeah. So she's gonna try to summarize what this SUP process will do and how it will be administered, and what it applies to, and what it doesn't apply to, since you have a pretty firm concept of that. Before we go to P and Z, if you have anything that you're concerned about, we want to hear about it, obviously as quickly as possible, because we're basically ready to go to P and Z very quickly. And assuming that you're okay, what we do with that is very quickly. So that's the purpose of this discussion, is to make sure that we've addressed what you wanted to. We can talk about other things that may not be in there, why they're not in there, but the staff, you can go ahead and start walking through it and see what you know.
Thank you, Todd. I also left a chart for you that we had done. The chart will give you at a glance, basically, what those uses are that require us to. So you could look at it at a glance and see in which zoning district and what uses we are proposing to have in a special use permit. The reason we call it a special use permit is because we'll have a specific use zoning district, so we kind of wanted to have a little bit of mainboard. Calling this presentation, improving development standards, this goes back to our discussion yesterday about planning and why we do plans, because after doing the plans and setting the goals, then you come back with an implementation tool. So special use permit is one of those implementation tools in order to achieve our planned goals, basically. And so the reason for, you're going to be seeing a lot of kind of new changes or implementation tools, and the reason in our, to do that specifically for our development standards is to stimulate investment and growth, strengthen our community image, emphasize quality and sustainable development, and again, get the right implementation tools for the goals that you want to implement. So, special use permit, what is it, and why are we proposing to have a special use permit? Basically, it allows you and the Planning and Zoning Commission an opportunity to evaluate certain uses with special characteristics, to make sure that they're compatible, that their location is the right location in the city, and they are compatible with adjacent properties, and they are not going to have a negative impact on the city. So, the intent is to have certain uses that may not be typically compatible, but with certain conditions and improvements would be compatible, to look at those conditions and restrictions, again, to make, to assure that we are not taking away anything in the long term from the city. It is less permanent that our specific use zoning district. Currently, what we have in the ordinance is a permanent zoning district. You're basically, every time you've got a specific use zoning, you're creating a zoning district, which is, which is permanent. With a special use permit, you can put a timeframe on it. You could review it in two years and come back to see if the use is really truly doing what you intended for it to do. Not everything has to have a timeframe on it, but you certainly can put a timeframe on certain, certain special use permits. And it's, again, the main purpose of it, that it does allow for more review and more detailed review, not only by staff, but by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. So current, our current process, we have 35 zoning districts, and they are straight zoning, and they're cumulative zoning. So cumulative zoning means that what you allow in a lower zoning district, let's take your office district. As you go to local commercial, all the uses in the office district also can be in local commercial plus other uses. Then you go to a higher zoning district, general business district, then all the uses in office district and local commercial and general business plus additional uses.
Is it always done that way?
It's always done that way. It's all completely, it goes to 19. Thank you.
You don't see variation on that anymore?
There are, in new zoning ordinance, there are quite a few variations. You don't, that is not the best use of a zoning ordinance, is to have cumulative zoning. So, at the end, we'll talk about that and ask a lot of you. But our zoning district is always a cumulative zoning district. So we have never had the tool, we've never used the special use permit or specific use permit, which is a permitting tool. Again, this is not a zoning district, it's more a permitting. This process that you go through is very similar to zoning, but remember that it's permitting and not zoning. So we compare what the special use permit, which is a new section in the ordinance versus the specific use zoning that is currently in the ordinance. So we have greater number of uses under special use permit, we have limited uses in specific use zoning. When you do specific use zoning, it affects the entire property. When you do special use permit, it only impacts a small portion. So for instance, let's take a shopping center. So if somebody is leasing a portion, that is a use that comes under special use permit. In the past, we had to zone, you know, you'd zone the entire property for specific use zoning, where you only need a small portion for that particular use. Cell towers are a perfect example. Because of their nature, they can go anywhere in the city. And so they would come in and zone as public staff in the middle of a shopping center to specific use zoning, and that is just not what you want in your zoning ordinance. It's an overlay district. Basically, it's an overlay on top of the existing zoning. You are not changing the zoning on a piece of property. This is not zoning initiated on a property owner. So it sits on top of the existing zoning district, which is extremely important in terms of new, I'm not sure. So on this, on the specific use zoning, it's its own zoning district. Again, special zoning, special use permit can be, and I'm gonna start calling it SUP and S U zoning, from just one moment. So it's less permanent of nature, you can't have an expiration on the zoning district, there is no expiration on S U zoning.
Is that something that is determined at the time of the...
At the time of...
...application and approval?
And again, sometimes you can have, you put an expiration date in the beginning of it, like two years, and then you put in yours, and then making sure that nothing has changed or nothing has, has been strongly impacted, then you give them that permit. So, and then one of the most important things, which both, both uses do require, our specific use zoning currently requires an engineering site plan review. So at the time of zoning, which does not apply to our other zoning districts, they come in with a full set of engineering site plan, you can actually see what they're gonna be building, you know, look at all the utilities, look at all the infrastructure, and so for both processes, then it's applicable. And the use limitation is an overlay in certain zoning district where the, this zoning is its own zoning district. So the process is basically, you file for a special use permit, it's an application process, and engineering site plans require, so staff goes through the review of engineering site plan. The underlying zoning remains, so if you have a local commercial zoning, that zoning is still in place. And you don't need necessarily to change the entire zoning on the property, it does require notification, so that's very, very important, because adjacent properties are unnoticed. We do use the same process as we do for zoning, so we do notify all property owners within 200 feet at the time of Planning and Zoning Commission process, and then we publish a notice in the paper for the City Council process. So two public hearings for, for every one of the processes that you go through. Again, the process allows Council and P and Z to truly look at the, that particular use and add conditions and regulations. We have a general language in the ordinance, in working with Liz and Claire, that Council can adopt reasonable conditions. We're going to create a guidelines for what those conditions are, so it's in addition to the ordinance, there are guidelines for staff, for Planning and Zoning Commission, for City Council, that what some of those conditions could be. There are very, very minor amendments, because this is such a lengthy process, and again, we want to be very development friendly, there are some minor changes that could be a footstep, but not, nothing major.
So, scramble a little bit, we make sure everybody understands the conditions and regulations themselves are not going to be specified...
With the ordinance.
...in reply to what necessarily the ordinance, the authority to have, conditions and regulations is, but we don't have a list. What we'll do is establish some kind of guidebook, guidelines, for what those things might be for the P and Z and for you, when you're reviewing a case of this nature, so that you can decide what you might want to require. The reason for that not being in the ordinance, primarily a legal argument, that rather than try to put everything in the ordinance that might come up and leave something out, it'd be better just to deal with it on a case-by-case basis as those cases occur. So we'll also provide those types of guidelines to anybody who's an applicant, so they know what they might have to face in obtaining their permit, whether it might be in the ordinance per se. And she'll show you a list later on, what some of them are.
So, what's in the ordinance right now is compatibility criteria for our, so these are the general items that are currently in the ordinance, which has to be compatible and complement the surrounding uses and community facilities, it has to contribute, enhance or promote welfare of the area, of the requests and adjacent properties, not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, and conform to all other respects designed for us, all the regulations that stand. So this is what's going to be in the ordinance, and from this, we can just add the guidelines of this specific. So these could be examples of conditions and regulations that could be added based on those other four criteria that we just had. So you could regulate and limit uses, including collaboration of adjacent uses, so if you have five or six of them in the, in the same area, basically, that's something that you could regulate and take a look. Regulate fences and screening walls, specifically for outside storage, and regulate the location and amount of outside, outside storage. So for instance, if you have a use that's going to have outside storage right in front on the street side, that's something that can be regulated by a special use permit to move it somewhere else, so it can be less physical. We can require the property to be padded, traffic impact analysis is a big one, regulate material, building material texture, color, architectural design, landscaping, of course, hours of operation and conduct of certain activities, lighting, open space, other amenities and other physical features. One of the things that, just as a, as a general guide, I wanna point out to is, when you look at the, the chart that we just gave you, primarily the uses we're looking at are the ones that have either very visual impact on the community, traffic impact, or just of their nature, they have public safety impact, those are the types of uses that we're looking at. So if you look at all the uses, they all can come into those categories.
And one of the things that this obviously does, if you look at this list of possible conditions and regulations, not all of them would be applicable to every, or any...
Application.
...application, probably one or two or three, the list might be a typical case. But, some of those things do require considerably more effort and potentially more cost on behalf of the applicant to produce prior to getting approval, and that's one of the realities of a SUP process, is that because of the difference, the unusual, or more unusual nature of the use, more information might be necessary, and they might need to address other issues in order to obtain that permit. And so you could get some backlash about, oh my gosh, you not have to go do a traffic impact analysis. Well, the only reason you have to do a traffic impact analysis is if you have a specific use that look like it's gonna generate a hell of a lot of traffic, or some kind of unusual traffic. So that's one of those things you have to kind of be aware of as policymakers, and understand in case you do wind up here and pop that a little bit, but again, that's the nature of the SUP process.
Of course, the flip side of that is zoning doesn't allow it before, you know, when you're trying to get to it.
Well, zoning will allow it, it's just that you wouldn't have a process, that they just go out and do whatever they want. That's the flip side.
But they have existing stuff, there's something that exceeds it, though, that doesn't allow for it, they wanna go that around.
Well, they don't have zoning, if the zoning doesn't allow it, they can't get an SUP permit.
Correct.
The zoning, the zoning has to allow the use to begin with.
Okay, that's where I'm missing.
Yeah, the zoning has to allow the use to, from a get-go. If not, if not allowed use, you can't do it at all.
Okay.
And what she was getting at is that this is an overlay on top of the zoning, so certain of those uses that are allowed within that district require that SUP process before they're permitted.
It's always gonna be an open...
Yeah.
So that's, that's a very, very important one, as well, as one that, you know, you all need to be aware of.
The way I heard it was that if I have a certain zoning and I wanted something that wasn't fitting in that zoning, I could get that overlay for this little chunk.
You gotta come back and do zoning.
I gotta come the other way, okay.
I gotta come back to that, but remember...
My ignorance for not listening.
No, I'm glad you mentioned it, because that's common misunderstanding.
And it is extremely important, because what this does, basically, it does change our zoning ordinance, because there are certain uses now, take our, and if you go to the second page of, of the chart, you can see what's impacting, this ordinance impacted our heavy industrial zoning district, because those are the most intense uses, the heavy industrial, and, and our light industrial, heavy industrial, and work system. Because some of those uses are currently in the ordinance by rights, and then it's in the ordinance, you got, you don't have to go through any special process.
Okay. Also wanna thank you for making me figure out what column bearing was.
All as well as cemetery. So, so you can see in the, the heavy industrial, almost everything is gonna be SUP, because the nature of heavy industrial zoning district allows those uses that are so intense and would have such a huge impact on the community. So yes, the zoning ordinance will change, it's a change in zoning.
Thank you.
So these are, we wanted to show what's currently in the specific use zoning district in the ordinance, because we are keeping this district still intact for three uses, basically, because we think those uses do need that specific use zoning district, but we are moving other ones either to the specific use, I'm sorry, to the special use permitting process, or completely eliminating them. So bed and breakfast, cemeteries and accessory uses, broadcast towers, cell towers...
And this is your, this is what your current...
This is your current.
This is your current specific use zoning.
Zone in the ordinance currently. Landfill operations, mining activities, the use of electronic or electromechanical or mechanical devices, we just did not, basically gambling devices. So gambling is prohibited anyway, so we didn't know what this section of ordinance was meant to do, so we're just basically taking it out of this.
This, this, that particular section was a, was an attempt to define eight liners, basically, yes, or they find type of devices, that's something that would need to have a specific use zoning before you could have a, soon to recall it was in there, because at the time, the legislation, the state legislature semi-opened the door to this, that there might have been some understanding that maybe some of those devices were illegal. There was some uncertainty at the time, as to how legal some of those devices were. So I think what happened, as I recall, kind of a long time ago, we put this in there so that if any of those devices looked legal, they just had to go through a specific use zoning. But since then, the legislature's clarified that they're not legal, and so, basically, we don't need to have a specific use district for something that's illegal.
Yeah, but that stuff changes daily, there's always somebody figuring out a way to start doing something.
Well, we'll have to adjust. For now, we don't see any reason to include that, so you'll, you'll see it eliminated with party.
And then the ordinance called for other unusual uses, and that's a problematic language in the ordinance, so we are taking that out. Actually, when we went back and did some research, apparently, like 30 years ago, an unusual use was the daycare, so we had, we had the daycare. There is some specific use zoning right now, so, because I guess they didn't have it in the ordinance then, I don't know what, what to do with what, so.
I don't, personally, by the way. Have you seen what comes out of those daycares? I'm gonna come along.
So the changes we're making out of the specific use zoning district, deleting the broadcast towers, cell towers, bed and breakfast, and we are putting, so the broadcast towers will go with an SUP in our L C G B L I warehouse and H I district, bed and breakfast will go with an SUP in our old town center, old town mixed use one and two. So primarily, if you are getting bed and breakfast, we kind of like to have it all the time. And then delete cemetery and accessory uses, and we are putting that with an SUP, just about in all the zoning districts, with this special use permit. And then, of course, we talked about the electromechanical machines, and then we're deleting.
So, you see, we're grandfathering existing uses, well, we don't have a good rest of the person's grandfather there. Do you have a crematorium on the east end that you might have heard about in the past from nearby residents? That is a legal zone use, it will be grandfathered as a non-conforming use of the amendments. I don't know if you know, May, that the building burned not too long ago, an extensive fire, didn't burn to the ground, the exterior, I believe, was relatively good shape, but interior was severely damaged.
It's not the first time.
First time it burned?
They, they caught on fire.
Oh, I don't know, I thought it was the first time. Were they caught on fire before?
They've had a dis, I don't believe that that building was actually caught on fire. They've had a history of their, their burners and their turbos not performing, so it puts out a lot of smoke in the neighborhood.
I just remember hearing on scanners, a call to the location, years.
Right, yeah. Yeah, maybe people are calling, something's going on, and they're reporting it to the department. So Eric, I guess, what's the status on that? I guess they're, they'll be allowed to reconstruct and rehab everything on the interior, subject to a typical building permit, correct?
At this point, that's the way it's looking.
So what if they do, if it completely goes away, they're gonna have to come back and go through the special use permit process, go through a zoning process and a special use permit process, because we'll have to change that zoning now from another, from the S U district to another district that we allow.
Have they actually come in with anything yet?
Tim, on Martin Oaks, are they, are they old, under 50% or over?
Yeah, the building department said they were under 50%, which codes would allow them to rebuild without, you know, without the process.
They're talking about, I think they're still doing insurance.
Sorry.
And by the way, just to touch on that, Tim, we are getting complaints from a new crematorium in Flowermount, that is in Flowermount, it's, it's the, we understand it's the former Dalton operation, but that, that operation is in Flowermount. We're getting calls on it, but that's not in Westville.
So, and then, again, what we talked about, leaving the unusual uses language. So what will remain in the specific use zoning district are only three uses now, which is criminal or penal institutions, landfill operations and accessory uses, and mining activities, including storage of sand, gravel, stone, and that type of use. So those three will remain in the specific use zoning district. Now, I'm not gonna go through all of these, again, this is a chart that's in front of you, but these are the proposed special use permit uses. So these, some of these are currently allowed in various sections of the ordinance by rights, they are going to convert to a special use permit.
So you're saying there that we can have Hammond 10 up to 100 feet?
No, anything, that, that's, that's, anything that's greater than 100 feet is subject to that, yeah, less than that.
It's okay, all right, cool, great.
So, but auto repairs, auto sales, auto salvage, you can, you see a lot of auto-related uses, a lot of uses to poor outside storage.
These mobile carts that sell, you know, food, or popcorn, or whatever they do.
Cut candy.
Pardon me?
Cut candy.
Are they, would they fall under this?
No, those are out there now, I'm trying to...
Their mobile vendor permits, this is fixed, this is fixed land, fixed building uses.
Correct. What will affect this, though, what we call kiosks, the very small operations, like ice machines, ATM machines that have no relationship to the bank, basically, they're just sitting in the middle of the parking lot. So anything that's what we call a kiosk and unmanned, or even managed, that are smaller than 500 square feet will come under this.
But those mobile vending things have to get permits too, for these things.
They have to get a permit, but it's not under...
Right, not this, because they did separate from marketing.
Correct.
Are they checked?
Yes, sir.
Just...
Any uses...
Thanks for that quick answer there. Didn't even step on your toes there, we were just...
Pretty young, yeah.
I just wanted to kind of pause on this slide just for a minute, just to make sure Council has some, has their own little...
You'll see, second column, seven down, there's your residential accessory building.
And are we still gonna, yeah, we're changing it from 150 to 120?
Keeping 120.
Keeping 120. Yeah, we saw on this thing on page 99, 150 is marked out from the old ordinance?
No, this is not the old ordinance, this is, this also, you change, you see, changes what my staff did versus, because we were having so many different versions.
Oh, okay, so this is just the old version, okay.
I've changed it to the final version that Council approved.
I know that I brought up before, just for everybody in the building, that the top, you know, sellers at Lowe's were under 150 square feet for sheds, and...
They were under that 120.
And I looked at that, but we're still gonna go 120, so the people who are buying their bestsellers are gonna have to get a permit now, so.
Actually, we check, actually, we do check, I think staff do check, and Lowe's and Home Depot, they're actually, theirs were 129, were their bestsellers.
And that was, that was talking to those folks, and then when I went and did a check on both Lowe's and Home Depot...
I just checked Lowe's.
Seven out of 36, for both, they both do 36 as their top sellers, I think it was seven at Home Depot were over 150, and the remainder were under 120. And then Lowe's, out of their 36, there were eight that were over 150. So, it's a, it's a small percentage over 150.
Yeah, there were some over 150, yes. I was talking about under 150.
But good point, that yes, we had incorporated, so right now, when you see it, when the ordinance comes to you, it has incorporated all of those changes for accessory buildings.
Okay. Okay, time, time I get rid of confusion here. This is residential as accessory building.
Yes.
Meaning you're using it for residential purposes, or not, correct?
Well, according to your own...
Residential accessory buildings means what under the ordinance?
This is only for dwelling, it's subject to S U.
That's my point, that's my point. We're talking, we're not talking about the shed, storage shed, we're talking about using a shed as a residence.
Or an add-on building.
Oh, well, I thought we, I thought another one said, I'm gonna use a shed as a residence.
Remember the guy that came in and complained about the, the building that had been constructed?
Yep, yeah.
That, that's what this is talking about.
Oh, that's what this is talking, I thought this was talking about sheds.
No, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance that you have talks about sheds, because you have to, so, so if you remember, when we were talking about the residential accessory buildings, there was a portion of it that goes under the SUP, that's the dwelling units, remember? The dwelling units that would be only permitted in the larger zoning districts, already ten and above, would come under an SUP.
Yeah, it's called, yeah, it's called a dwelling, accessory dwelling, which is different than the...
But the, but the other portions that you talked about is still in the zoning ordinance, and since we're changing the zoning ordinance, we are addressing all of those. So, when you get the zoning ordinance, because the reason we gave you that, the copy that's going around with the red line, we had to change the entire zoning ordinance to implement this. So since we were changing the entire zoning ordinance, whatever that we needed to change the zoning ordinance, we tried to do, which includes accessory buildings of all kinds.
So, the gist is, we...
The gist is we've adjusted it.
We've adjusted it to a flat.
And there's actually a trend towards this where you can drop, you can actually drop a prefab residential, and it's a house, it's a mini-house for the elderly. You can drop it right in your backyard, it's already done. It's, it's, so it's good that we're aggressive.
And let me just clarify, what she passed around was the first, well, not the first. But it's not the last, it doesn't have legal changes in it. Because it got so, if we would have given you all of it, it just would have been all red. So I think that's what's causing the confusion.
I thought it was the original with the latest changes.
It's the original with some changes, it's not the original with all the changes. Because we just, they give you just a new, basically, a permit.
Just to clarify, an accessory dwelling unit, that always, I mean, that's different. There's no non-permitted use for that, correct? You always have to get a permit or?
Always have to get a permit. Always have, now, if you approve this ordinance, you have to go to a special.
Special use.
It's on top of the building.
Right, okay.
And that's the difference that we now have compared with before, that it wasn't clear you couldn't do that. Now it's clear that if you want to do that, you can ask for S U P, is my guess.
Right.
No location requirements and all that stuff.
That, a month or a couple of months ago, when we had the guy come in and show the pictures of the two-story dwelling place that.
Deal with that situation.
That would have handled, this would have handled that, correct? All right, that's, because if I was a neighbor there, I'd be kind of finally looking at my baggy.
So how is this going to impact our churches and organizations that come in? And we typically give them a ten-year permit or ten-year option for a temporary building?
Temporary buildings are not, you still deal with it.
That's typically, that's typically a variance to the G D O. This is residential, so this does not apply to a business. A business can't come out and apply for a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty square foot permit under this category. So you would still be able to give council variances on temporary buildings or things of that nature.
Could we move those under the special use permits? Or does it make, not, does it not make sense?
You could, if you want, it just makes more.
Just clarify that a little better as opposed to them all being one-offs with their own timeframes and management and all that. Although, I guess, just don't be one-offs with also timeframe management.
Yeah, I don't understand what to change.
I know we don't, just to get it allowed.
The process would be different. They have to have notice.
They have to have notice. Yeah, that's not bad.
I have one question. Did the definition of residential accessory buildings change?
Yes, we've clarified.
Okay. I'll wait to see what that.
Okay. And again, the other uses, as you can see, they, they tend to be.
And we do check. Sorry.
Okay, the other section, again, this goes back to since we are changing the zoning ordinance, we wanted to kind of take care of some of the issues and problems we've been having. And one of the areas of problem is our non-conforming use section. Because currently, what the ordinance allows is if you have a non-conforming use. So basically, it means a use that's operating that wouldn't be allowed in that particular zone. So as an example, you have a body shop in Old Town that zoned Old Town Mixed Juice. So the Old Town Mixed Juice would not allow a body shop. But the body shop has been in existence on that piece of property for twenty-eight. So they continue to be in existence, and we allow that to continue. Now, if that use was vacant, if they went away, if the site was cleared, our current ordinance allows for that use to come back again within a year. So they could reoccupy the property and continue what we call the non-conforming use within a year. That's a big problem now. Because you could clean up a piece of property with a non-conforming use and you come back again, and you just haven't, you know, we never seem to win that battle of cleaning up. So what we are proposing in the ordinance is to shorten that timeframe of when they can come back. So if it's, again, we're talking about a use. There is a non-conforming use, a non-conforming structure. Now, the structures can be reoccupied within a year, but we're changing the use that they would only have three months to be reoccupied. So if a use that's non-conforming goes away and it doesn't come back within three months, then they're gone, they cannot come back. Now, we're not forcing anybody with an existing use to move away. They can continue operation, the operation can continue. The only time this applies is if they are vacating, if the use is gone.
Could that be changed, a variance?
Yes, they can go to zoning board adjustment.
Say there was a police action that was, and then there was something happening at the property and Lowe's destroyed, and they couldn't do anything. So it's kind of like a variance on that.
Council, no, but zoning board adjustment.
Zoning board adjustment.
There is a process, yes.
For some period of time. Okay.
So that's a big change. And then the structures, they have a, they have a year, and then after a year, they have to come out. Any questions on that? This would give staff a lot of, a lot of leeway of enforcement. So where are we in the process? We have to change the entire zoning ordinance, so that's why it has taken so long. But the ordinance is ready to go. If you guys are ready, we've had it scheduled on the planning and zoning commission agenda within the next month and coming back to you, but after that. And that's where we are. But we do have some much-needed future project, and I don't think Claude would like to move into that.
I'm sorry.
We're at the end of the process where we are, what we need in the future.
What we're talking about here is kind of the outcome of our internal discussions about what it took to deal with just this one set of changes to the zoning ordinance, and the amount of effort that Legal and E D planning went through to instill it through. As you can see, to deal with this particular change. Our zoning ordinance has been in place more than probably fifty years in pretty much its current format. And you can actually see when you read through the zoning ordinance, a variety of uses that you can almost feel the eighteen hundreds in.
It was good though.
Not that some of those uses are still a lot out there, but you just don't see, you know, a whole lot of slaughterhouses and things like that or some of the language, in fact, that T J asked about. It reflects some of those old concepts. So it's served us reasonably well, but is it a modern zoning ordinance? No, it's, it's, it's kind of cobbled together. And because of the copping, every time you change it, it raises the possibility that something is going to be missed, people have conflicts. Of course, there's a section in the ordinance, I think it deals with conflicts. But what we feel like is that perhaps it's time to sit down and really take a long, hard look and do a full overhaul of the ordinance. And that's not an easy thing to do, nor will it be a cheap thing to do. Because basically, you're going to have to go out and hire someone to do it. It's one of those tiny things that I talked about on Monday night. We don't have the staffing and legal or planning to do a full overhaul. It would probably take ten years to get it done a little bit at a time. And that basically makes it.
Out of the.
Well, yeah, at some point in time. So typically, when cities have to do this or want to do this, they're looking at going out and bringing in a team of people. It's usually a set of planners and attorneys essentially that are going to be charged with drafting up what you want. Now, the problem with that is what do you want? We don't know yet. And I think that twenty twenty-five process should guide that decision. I have no reason to make that decision right now, but I think the twenty twenty-five process will begin to start dealing with some of the concepts that are out there that might be part of a new zoning ordinance, including things like vested rights, how to deal with the vested rights legislation that changes virtually every legislative session. I'm certain that we'll probably have some amendments this current session that deal with, quote, vested rights. Issues such as amortization or grandfathering strategies, how long those things take are on the table. There's a variety of overlay districts that we've talked about that we haven't implemented yet. The main one being the I thirty-five corridor overlay. Part of that may be development, part of it might be zoning. By the way, just the relationship between the zoning ordinance and the general development ordinance is one that might be looked at because some cities do a little bit of both in the zoning ordinance. Ours is more or less bifurcated. You have uses over here, then you have development of those uses over here. There's pros and cons to that. But I think that's, again, something that the twenty twenty-five, we take a hard look at. We've talked about sustainability elements, including alternative energy uses, things like wind towers or turbines in residential districts that came up during the discussion last year and would require some kind of regulation or control within a zoning ordinance, or could, put it that way. But there's not just wind towers, there are other things out there. There's the, the electric solar panels, there's, we're named chickens, which is kind of a use, but not put that in the zoning ordinance. But the sustainability elements are beginning to take on a little bit more importance in municipalities' regulations. So again, something like that might be one of the things you look at. And I've talked about the role and application of the G D O, the incorporation of design standards, you know, the question of form-based codes and how that applies to zoning is a big, big project in and of itself, which would go well beyond the consulting to how you actually implement something like that. So anyhow, the gist is it's going to require substantial time and effort and financial commitment. We don't think it can be done in-house, and we think it's overdue as a tool and would recommend that you first toss this to the twenty twenty-five committee. One of those committees that's working needs to kind of take a fundamental look at this. And then at such time as appropriate, it might be a next year's budget or some other year budget, maybe even after that, that you set aside some money to begin that process. So that's the much-needed future project. That slide out, which is what's left, and is that it? So wanted to let you know that that's out there. Liz, Claire, I don't know if you guys got anything to add to that as far as the perspective of Legal, but.
Well, I do think that the zoning ordinance needs to be modernized. And as Claude indicated, this is just not big enough. We helped Nika on this, both of them, I did. And we probably worked exclusively on it for about three weeks to the detriment of all the other people that had legal questions waiting. So we've been catching up on all that other legal work because it just, it's kind of like a never-ending bowl of soup. Every time we would touch one part, we would find that that change affected something somewhere else. And like Claude said, it's been cobbled together through the years. And so some of it, it's just very challenging. And so if, if we were to rehaul the whole thing, it would take at least one attorney doing that and nothing else in order to get it done in a year. So I think that farming it out to someone who does it regularly for cities is probably a better use of time and money.
In addition, it's a typical, in terms of enforcement, between our staff and Eric's staff, it's just a difficult ordinance to do. And sometimes you guys ask us questions about what can't be do this, what can't be do that. It's just simply the way the ordinance is written. It doesn't give us flexibility to do certain things.
Of course, it's just like you can't staff up enough people for temporary projects like that. You need cost effective. You got to, sometimes you try to staff up to your average daily needs. And when you have special projects, you have to bring in supplemental staff.
People.
Right. Right. So I think, I really, I've visited Callas a few times in, in business, but to, I'd really recommend us look at doing this, like I said, give the input from twenty twenty-five committees, and then you've got the direction to go. But I think it's good for us to go ahead and plan on doing this based on the outcomes of the twenty twenty-five so that we can get this implemented. Because even then, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's probably going to take a couple of years even to get it finalized, even by bringing somebody along.
It's a year.
And let me just say that what we came up with is a, is a great benefit to where we are right now. So I, you know, I'm confident that if y'all wanted to pass something, we presented to y'all, that it would help.
It helped a great deal.
Yeah, that's what we're attempting to do, is not miss highly critical element where you want to be off. So we got it in place, because sometimes they want to be, you should be now have a tool to use. Once we have that major tool, then some of these other more complicated issues we dealt with over the periods of time.
It doesn't, it's good for us, probably, that needing to be solved is the stepping stone.
Yeah. And that doesn't mean that you can't take further stepping stones while we're waiting to deal with this long range. And a good example, that might be the, the sustainability type of uses. We need to insert something in there to deal with wind towers or wind turbines or.
City vehicles.
Vehicles. No, city vehicles, I'm going to land this in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if you've got land uses that have some of those things that you're interested in, we could probably continue to amend or consider in order to deal with that. Again, the bigger picture is the, you know, dealing with some of these more complicated issues. I think that's going to require, it doesn't take a long, hard, looking at the ordinance. Take the seat.
I would say this, my own conversations would need to predate my time on council. And, and we've had, you know, kind of off and on discussions without, it can kind of be, we're going to put it this way, when you look at the history of things, towns in America started out as mixed-use developments. And then some people in Ohio decided they had a better idea. We've got the food and zoning. And then everybody said, okay, well, we're compartmentalized. Everything now is going back to mixed use and form-based codes are the answer. And, you know, we, we don't have, we've got this, this, not just Euclidian system, but this community, which is like a group, you know, you couldn't make it worse. So it's, it's just desperately need a change.
Okay, I think that's it. No questions?
Can I get any comments with the S U P plan that we got going forward? And looking at this overall of the zoning in the future?
So you will see next, you will see the actual changes to zoning ordinance probably very, very quickly.
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, forty-nine and twenty-two minutes like yesterday, or twelve minutes early.
One-third?
One-third.
Okay, we're going to break. Come on, we'll be back at one-third.